The second word that Jesus shares with us on the cross is also from the Book of Luke. And in the Book of Luke, Jesus is crucified, and one on his right and one on his left. And one of them turns to him and says, "Jesus, remember me when you come into your kingdom." And Jesus answers him and says, "Today you will be redeemed in paradise." And of course, that leaves a lot for us to wonder about as we are listening to Jesus's words. So the Scripture tells us that Jesus is sentenced to death along with two other people. And one gospel called criminals and another called the thieves. But they have obviously done something wrong, a natural one, the death penalty. And so that leads all of us to the same. Our sentence today, which we are taking to what is called our Galdota, and they are crucified together, one on the right and one on the left of Jesus. So Jesus hangs on the cross, and so many people around him are talking. If you were Messiah, even the thief on one side of the cross, he says, "If you're the son of God, why don't you save yourself and us?" And so this really harkens back to Jesus's time in the wilderness, his temptation. So he's in the temptation, he's in, Jesus is in the wilderness, being tempted by Satan. And the adversary says to him, "If you're the son of God, why don't you make this stone, become a loaf of bread? If you are the son of God, why don't you throw yourself from the pinnacle of the temple?" Because Scripture says God was sent to be an angel to save you. And so it's back to that time of Jesus being tempted. And then the end of the Scripture of Jesus's time in the wilderness says, "Then the devil left him to wait for an opportunity to return." And it appears that this is the opportunity to return. Except now, it's being tempted by Satan or the adversary. Jesus is being tempted by all of those around him. They are putting this, that Jesus is who he says he is. He is the Messiah, he is the son of God. And yet, instead of saving himself, he gives himself up. He gives up to save other people, to save himself. So as all of this taunting is going on around Jesus, there's one person there who's just listening and taking this all in, in form. It's the second thief. We don't know how this thief, this thief may have just met him for the first time on the cross. But it could be that he was around when Jesus was teaching in the streets when he was in Jerusalem. Perhaps he spotted Jesus on Sunday, when the throngs of people were in the streets saying, "This is the son of David," and raining palm branches. It could be that he was in that crowd. And even though he may not have had a personal encounter with Jesus before this day, he has certainly already heard about the miracles, about the healing, about the teaching. Because there's so much excitement in Jerusalem. And maybe this man is the Messiah, the one who has come to save Israel. And so as he hangs on the cross, the second thief is horrified by what he hears. "If you're the son of God, save yourself." Jesus's father forgives him, and they don't know what they're doing. And in these words, the second thief on the cross says, "Sure, this man is innocent." I think he knows that Jesus is innocent because of Jesus's reaction. Because what Jesus asked God to do for those who are crucified, for those who are talking. And I think this is the way, as we read this scripture, we too can see that Jesus is innocent. And he is who he says he is. This like a criminal realizes that Jesus is innocent. And he comes to believe in that moment that Jesus is who he says he is. He is the Messiah, he is the son of God. He calls him, he's the only person in the New Testament to call Jesus intimately by his first name. "Jesus, remember me when you come into your kingdom." And of course, the word Jesus evokes incredible, incredible amount of meaning. The word, the name Jesus was a very common name in Jesus's day and culture. A lot of people named their sons Jesus because they hoped that their son would be the Messiah. And there's a real reason for this. Jesus's name in Hebrew is "Yesus," but in Hebrew it's "Yesua." And Yesua in English is Joshua. If you take that name back to the Old Testament, you find that Joshua, of course, was the person who took over the reins from Moses in the wilderness. And he was the one tasked with leading the people into the promised land. And Yesua, Joshua's name means "he saves" or "he delivers." Jesus, Yesua, Joshua, all the same name. Jesus's name means "he saves," "he delivers." But the second thief says to Jesus, "Jesus, remember me when you come into your kingdom." I think it's interesting because the thief doesn't say, "Jesus, save me." "Jesus, forgive me." He just says, "Jesus, remember me when you come into your kingdom." None of us want to be remembered for that one fallacy thing we did. The time that we were cruel to someone else, the time that we hurt someone. And neither does this man who's hanging beside Jesus on the cross. In the Old Testament, remembrance is often tied with deliverance or salvation. God remembers Noah and the animals when they were on the ark and delivers them. God remembers the Israelites, hears their cry and remembers them and delivers them from slavery in Egypt. Example after example after example of people in the Old Testament saying, "Remember me," and in the songs, and God delivering them. So the thief on the cross of the second thief says to Jesus, "Remember me when you come into your kingdom." And he's hoping that Jesus will invite him into this kingdom. And then he tells her that salvation and Jesus came on, that's the Messiah. But it's today, today you will be redeemed in paradise. Many of us think of paradise that must mean that the thief is going to be with Jesus in heaven that day. Well, that's partially true. Here's this pack of a lot of meaning. The term paradise is in the Septuagint, is the second name for the Garden of Eden. In the Gospels, Jesus says that the kingdom has come near and here, that the kingdom is here. Jesus says of eternal life, "You have eternal life." Not that it's coming only after death, but today you have eternal life. You can have the joy and the peace and the hope and the comfort of knowing that you are loved. And you can have that right now, right now, today. And that's true for all of us. Today, we can experience eternal life. And we can live that out in our relationships. We can live our lives with the joy and the peace and the comfort and the forgiveness that Christ offers us. And we don't have to wait until we die to experience that. Although, when we die, that will be, we'll experience that in its greatest fulfillment. So Jesus says to the thief on the cross, "Today, not tomorrow, but today, you will be with me, and I am with you in what he has done for you."
Just a moment, your thoughts on what she said, what she brought up? Let's go to Luke for just a moment because I do want to look at the initial temptations that we read about in Luke. Because those temptations become very important in the life of Jesus and pretty much in everything that Jesus does. Because those temptations, I don't think, sometimes I'm not sure that we understand just how powerful those temptations are and what they could do or what they could accomplish. Now, as we see, they are in the first part of the fourth chapter of Luke. And I want to go there for just a moment. Those on Zoom should be able to see it on the screen. It's on the TV here behind me as well. There are three temptations that happen in the wilderness. We know that it comes time for Jesus to begin his ministry. He realizes that his day has come and that he needs to go and start his ministry. But before he does anything, he does the one thing that we see consistent throughout Scriptures, but I'm not sure if we do it for ourselves. And that is, he goes away to spend some time by himself to be prepared or to get prepared for this mission and this ministry. You know, Moses was, had the burning bush, and then he went and worked for Jethro for right at 14 years. Isaiah went away for a short time before he began his ministry. Elijah was called away for a short time. You know, we have throughout Scriptures that before someone begins a major ministry, they tend to go out somewhere by themselves to prepare for that ministry. Paul, for three days, Saul was blind and was waiting upon his vision to be restored. And for those three days, he prepared. So with Jesus, we see that the preparation of Jesus comes in the way of the temptations in the wilderness. Now, the first temptation, we'll tell them verse three. "The devil said to him, 'If you are the son of God,'" Now, notice how he starts it. "If you are the son of God," those words become important. "Command this stone to become a loaf of bread." Why would Satan have started his temptations with a loaf of bread? I mean, this is the son of God, this is Satan, this is the son of God. Out of all the things you could offer, why would the first temptation be a loaf of bread?
Because he's hungry.
Because he's hungry. But what does Jesus become known as?
The bread of life.
The bread of life. He's playing off these words. Satan literally wants, instead of him becoming the bread of life, he wants him to become that master, that healer, that deliverer, the one that can feed everybody. You know, we see the story of the feeding of the 5,000, the feeding of the 4,000. And the one thing that we know, that there's a lot of people that followed Jesus for no other reason than the miracles he was doing. There's a couple of times where he even stops and asks them, "Why are you following me?" So the very first thing the devil does is, if I'm getting, instead of being the bread of life, to focus more on his physical needs, to focus on his physical desires, his physical wants, then I can pull him away from the bread of life. And I can make him focus on his physical needs. The next thing he does, he takes him up and shows him all the kingdoms of the world. And the devil said to you, "I'll give the glory and the authority, for it has been given over to me, and I give it to anyone I please. If you then will worship me, it will all be yours." If Jesus becomes a mighty king, if he becomes the ruler of all these territories, he's no longer the Messiah, is he? Because the ruler, a king is all about the physical territory, the physical aspect of being king. The land that they have, the land that they control, the people they control. Once again, Satan's doing his very best that instead of becoming, as he says in the Scriptures, that the kingdom is near him, Satan plays on that word "kingdom" again and wants him to look at a second, at a different kind of kingdom. And what you begin to realize is Satan loves world games. Satan absolutely loves world games. Whether we're dealing with Jesus or whether we're talking about ourselves, whenever you begin to find yourself in a tough place and in tough temptations, Satan loves to play world games. Because he likes to be able to use words against us. And he likes to be able to use even the things that we say against us. So he literally plays games here with this notion of kingdom. Instead of the kingdom being near in me, the kingdom would be his. Yes, it's interesting that the Jews, at the time they kept the Jews, expected that when the Messiah came, he would be in other David, he could be an earthly king. You're exactly right. And he was, well, and it's, and it's exactly why the Jewish people still do not accept him as Messiah today. Because the Jewish people are still looking for a Messiah that will reestablish Israel, that will reestablish the line of David on the throne to rule over all of Israel, that will reestablish the line of Aaron to be the high priest. The reason they do not, and one of the reasons, there's several. One of the reasons they don't accept Jesus as Messiah is because he did not physically fulfill what they thought he was supposed to do. He was supposed to deliver them, throw the Romans out, reestablish all this. And they're still waiting on that. They're still waiting on someone to come in and reestablish the kingdom and reestablish Israel. And you know, literally, this is, this is what Satan is offering the chance to do. Except in this case, it's an earthly kingdom. Or of course, we know that the kingdom of Jesus is a heavenly kingdom. So in the third temptation, he takes him to Jerusalem, I mean, verse nine, "Took him to Jerusalem, placed him on the pinnacle of the temple, saying to him, 'If you are the son of God, throw yourself down from here, for it is written, he will command his angels concerning you to protect you. And on their hands they will veil you up, so that you will not even dash your foot against a stump.'" Once again, he's playing world games here because if, imagine if he goes up on that temple and he throws himself off the temple. And literally, before he hits the ground, you know, these angels come and they stop him from hitting the ground and they lift him up and they start worshiping Jesus. Now all of a sudden, they're worshiping Jesus instead of God. How many times do we hear Jesus to remind us that everything he does points to God? Where this would point to him. And they would literally begin to worship him as a god, little g, not big G, a little g god because of the great things that they had seen done. And once again, we, this is a world game here. This whole notion, now they're playing the game with the word worship over what kind of worship does Jesus want? What kind of worship does Jesus expect? Earthly worship or heavenly worship? So all three of these temptations, Satan is playing world games. Now, as she said, Luke 4:13 is very important. "When the devil had finished his test, he departed from him until an opportune time." How many of you had ever noticed that it's said that he departed until? Have y'all noticed that before? You know, most people, when we read that, we think, oh, the temptations are over. He's done with this, but that's not what Satan said. It said that he departed him until an opportune time. In other words, I didn't beat you this time, but there may be a time coming when I can beat you. He's just going to be patient. It's going to be at his time. Go ahead, Dor.
The devil was all over to get Jesus in the Garden of Gethsemane.
Yeah, of course, he was in the Garden of Gethsemane. Because in the Garden of Gethsemane, you see both that side of Jesus that is completely human when he says, "Let this cup pass from me." And you see that side which is divine. "Not mine will die, will be done." And what you literally see there, go back to the sermon this morning about who will we follow? Whether we will follow the teachings of God and Jesus and follow His children of God or whether we follow our own desires? That's exactly what's playing out in the Garden of Gethsemane. Jesus has got to decide right here as we get toward the end of his life, who are you going to follow? Because let's face it, Jesus had the power and the authority to walk out of that garden and not die on the cross. He had the power, he had the authority to walk away. All he had to do was just leave. It was within him. You know, several years ago, I was talking to someone and they made the comment, well, he had to go to the cross. Well, according to God's plan, he was supposed, he was to be on the cross, but he could have stopped it. He didn't have to go. He could have called down the angels and put a stop to all that was going on and then set free. So we see this, we see, you know, how Satan loves to play world games. We see how he loves to take one thing and try to twist it. And what you saw in chapter two, she talks about the fact that, on the very first page, that each time Jesus doesn't take the bait. Instead, he responds to the tempter's misappropriation of Scripture by quoting Scripture himself. Now, I've said this several times, folks. I can prove anything you want me to prove. Anything you want me to prove, I can prove it using Scripture. It's not that hard. Pretty much anything you can think of, you can use Scripture to prove it. But to do it, you have to take it out of context. You have to take it out of context, you have to take it out of the way that it's written. You've got to kind of twist the words, you play, play some games with the Greek and the Hebrew and the Septuagint and all that. But if you work long enough and hard enough, you can prove whatever you want to. And we see this in these temptations here on the mountain, that all three times, you know, Satan quotes Scripture to him. It seems legitimate, what he's asking Jesus to do. It seems legitimate that literally, Jesus should be able to do this according to Scripture. And what we see is that Jesus always answers with Scripture. One of the most important things we see in this exchange, not only him on the mountain, but also in the garden, and then again, on the mountain, excuse me, on the cross, is the importance of knowing Scripture. You see, a lot of people get misled today because someone knows enough Scripture to sound legitimate. They know just enough Scripture to say what you want to hear or what they think you want to hear. And when you hear them say it, boy, it makes sense. It's like, yeah, that's what I've always been told, the Bible says. But then when you begin to look it up, you realize that, oh, no, they took it out of context. Or they changed a few of the words to change the meaning of it. It's really important that the children of God know Scripture. And I don't mean that you can quote chapter and verse. Folks, I can't quote much by chapter and verse. That's why the Bible has an index. But it is important that when you hear the word of God being perverted, that when you hear it, you realize, that's, no, that's not what that says. That's not what that means. One of my favorite ones that gets misinterpreted, when Jesus is talking to them about prayer and he says, "To not let the right hand know what the left hand is doing, and that we should never do things for glory." I absolutely love that Scripture. Because it gets mistranslated so many times. Because if you see someone that they seem to be seeking glory or something's happening or going on and people seem to be looking at them or they're drawing attention, inevitably, somebody will say, well, you know, Matthew says that the right hand shouldn't know what the left hand is doing and that we shouldn't be advertising. That's not what Matthew means. Matthew is simply saying that we should never do something solely for the purpose of being recognized. We should never do things with a selfish intent. It doesn't mean that we can't glorify God. You know, look how many times Paul in his letter talks about the opportunities that he was given to glorify God and to talk about God's name. There's nothing wrong with being able to say that, you know, I was out doing this or I was out doing that, and God just gave me the most amazing opportunity. Sherry and I had that this evening coming here. This time I didn't mess up, I actually did it right this time. I went into the, oh, into one of the stations here locally and was checking out. And as I was checking out, Marathon, as I was checking out, I happened to say to the, I happened to ask the young lady, "How is it with your soul today?" She looked at me and said, "What?" And I said, "How is it with your soul today?" And she literally took a step back and said, "Then what?" And so we stood there and talked for a moment. Finally, I asked her, I said, "Is Jesus Christ who saved you?" And she said, "No, not really." Used to be, but she went through a lot of things that had happened in her life. And she said, "I don't know that I believe, I don't know that I think any of this is real anymore." So you might know, I wanted to get a business card to tell her because there were people behind me and, you know, she's got to work, I don't want to get in any trouble. And I don't have a business card. So Sherry and I run home real quick. We get a business card, we go back, I give her the business card and I tell her, "I want you to call me. I want to talk to you." I mean, her life has just been so difficult. "I want to talk to you." Folks, there's nothing wrong with telling and rejoicing when God gives us a chance to magnify and glorify His name. There's nothing wrong with that. As long as you didn't do it purely for the glory, there's nothing wrong with that. And what we see in these teachings with all of this is that so many times, we want to take Him, we want to twist Scripture, we want to play world games to where, oh, it sounds really good, but that's not what it means. And that's exactly what we see going on here as Jesus is on the cross. Because as the people are walking by, what do they say to him? One of them looks up and says, "If you are the son of God." How did Satan start his temptations? Remember, Luke 4 said that he left Jesus until a more opportune time? Guess when the opportune time was? Hanging on the cross. How many, can you imagine how much pain this had to be? Imagine someone putting nails, actually, not for your problem, folks. The nails would have been right there in his wrist. They would have been right there where these bones come together, is where they nail people. Imagine somebody putting three, four, five inch nail right through the middle of your wrist on both of your arms. And then putting about a 10 inch nail right above, right above your ankle bone. And from what we can, from what we've, they've actually found trees that still had the nails in them. Sometimes they nailed one foot on each side of the tree. Sometimes they nailed them in front. But either way, it was right above that ankle bone, ankle bone that they ran that nail. And they would put a little platform right in front of their feet. Now, the reason they put that platform there is that when you're hanging on these nails, when you're being crucified, most people actually died of suffocation. That's usually what kills you. So they put this little pedestal, this little piece of wood right below your feet that if you stretch your toes, you can push your body up and get a breath. But of course, how long can you stand on your toes when you've got nails in your ankle and in your wrist? So then when you let down, of course, you can't breathe again. That's why, on an average, it takes three days for someone to die by crucifixion. For about three days, they can struggle to push themselves up on their toes until finally, they can't push themselves up anymore and they suffocate to death. In crucifixion, the vast majority died by suffocation. And according to Roman records, it takes an average of three days for someone to die of suffocation. This was a horrendous way to die. What more opportune time than to try and get Jesus to betray who he's supposed to be than when you catch him at his most painful? He's been beat half to death, he's been nailed to this cross, he's got the splinters all in his back coming. It's bad enough they beat him, but now he's hanging on his own cross and the splinters in the back and there's blood going everywhere. And his mouth literally is just probably swollen by now from dehydration. Folks, he was in atrocious shape on that cross. And somebody walks by and says, "If you are the son of God, come down off that cross." And then we begin to hear these last words of Jesus. We talked last week about Jesus looking down upon them and saying that, "Father, forgive them, for they know not what they did." And you know, whether this second thief, whether he was in the group that cheered Jesus as Jesus came in, or whether he simply had heard about Jesus in Jerusalem, it seems that this second thief at least knew who Jesus was. And he's hanging there on the cross and he's listening to them make fun of Jesus. He's listening to them just absolutely torment and torture him. And finally, he cannot stand it anymore. And he looks over at the first thief and literally just blesses him out and says, "You know, we deserve to be here, we committed a crime. This man's done nothing wrong. He shouldn't be up here with us." And then he looks over and says, "Jesus, remember me when you come into your kingdom." Now, there's a couple of things. Now, there's a couple of things I want us to note about that. Number one, as Susan Robb said in the video, did you know that that's the only time that someone called Him Jesus? It's the only time that somebody called Him Jesus. When you look through the Gospels, the Gospel writers referred to Jesus, and they say, "Jesus did this, or Jesus did that," but when someone was talking to Him, they didn't use His first name. They called Him master, they called Him a boni, they called Him a million and one other things, or they simply didn't speak His name at all, they just simply started in conversation. But when you look at all four Gospels, what you discover is, there's not a lot of people who call Him by His name. Matter of fact, at the garden, at the wedding at Cana, when the mother of Jesus went up to Jesus to tell Him what was going on, that they needed more wine, what did she call, did she say, "Jesus, they need more wine"? No, she said, "Son." "Son, they need more," even His mom doesn't call Him Jesus.
Even one time, he did, he tried to use "Son of Joseph."
Exactly, there was one time, well, the Pharisees and Sadducees are pretty much bad mouthing, and somebody says, "Yeah, well, isn't that the son of Joseph, who was a co-offender?" In other words, he's a nobody. And to say someone's name, and it's really interesting the way that they deal with things in the days of Jesus, someone's name has great power. So, the one thing that you never do, and folks, this is true today with most Orthodox Jewish people, you'll never hear them say the name of God. They will not say it, because in the early Scriptures, "If I can say your name, and if I can write your name, then I have power over you." And quite often, before they went into battle, they would write the name of an enemy down on a piece of paper, and then they would destroy that piece of paper, because they believed that it gave them special power over whoever they were about to go attack. So, to this day, you know, the best that we know, we know the name is Yerheh Bahai in Hebrew. We don't know how to pronounce it, because the name died with the priests in the Babylonian exile. The name, how to pronounce that name died. But if you're talking to someone who's Jewish, and they're writing down the name of God, number one, they will not write Yerheh Bahai, they will not write that name. And if they write the name of God, they'll put G dash D, they will put the O. Because names are that important, names are that powerful. So, we hear this thief on the cross, saying, "Jesus," calling Him by name, and asking Him to be remembered. Now, that notion of remembering, she said, is also very important in Scripture. Throughout Scripture, we constantly hear somebody asking God to remember them. Well, when you remember someone, what do you do? Somebody tell me, when you remember someone, what do you do? Ma'am? Reflect? You bring them into your mind, you literally recreate them in your mind, and the situation of good or bad that was going on, right? Well, that's exactly what this thief is saying, this thief is saying, "When you get to your kingdom..." Bring me to mind. Literally, he realizes, he professes, that Jesus remembering Him is enough for Him to enter into the kingdom, because notice what He doesn't do. Does He say, "Forgive me of my sins"?
He knows that He is King.
Exactly, and that notion of "Remember me in your kingdom" is in and of itself a confession, folks. Yes, Pastor? Exactly, you still talk about them, they... As long as you remember them, there's still a part of them that's alive and dwelling with you, and that stays with you. And all of this goes to what the thief is saying, that, you know, something thing, who would have believed? If you're one of these two thieves, and you're hanging on the cross, you look at the guy to your left, or to your right, whichever thief you are, and you see this man who literally is beat beyond recognition. By the time they got done with the lashes that they gave Jesus and everything else, he would have just about been beyond recognition. And you see this man who's got these nails driven through him, because, folks, not everybody was nailed to the cross, not everybody was nailed for crucifixion. Quite often, they simply tied you up, they put that bar a little bit lower, so that you had to strain a little bit more to pick yourself up. Not everybody was nailed when they were crucified. That was saved for the very worst, the most horrific offenders were nailed. Most of them were tied. So you see this man who, according to Roman law, and Jewish law, is a condemned man. He's got to be one of the worst people in the world, and you know he's going to die, because if nothing else, just all of his wounds are going to kill him. And you look at him, and you confess him as a king and a kingdom. I don't know about you, but that's not the image that comes to mind when I think of a king. Is it for you? We tend to think of the man sitting upon the throne, dressed in all these nasty clothes, got the gold crown on, dripping in jewels, you know, that image we get of a king. And yet, here's this thief saying, "When you come into your kingdom, remember me." She says, in the second section there, "He understands that Jesus really is a king, that Jesus' death on the cross will neither end His kingship, nor will it prevent His kingdom from coming." Will neither end His kingship, nor will it prevent His kingdom from coming. In other words, he realizes something that, believe it or not, the disciples have not realized yet. One of the things that I love about the thief on the cross, he realizes that He comes to end something that the disciples have not figured out yet, that Jesus doesn't end with death. Where are the other disciples when Jesus is hanging on the cross dying? Where are the other disciples? They scattered, may have been in the upper room locked up, we don't really know. The only one that's there is John's at the foot of the cross, because Jesus tells his son to stay. We know Judas is off hanging himself and dying. We know that Peter is scattered, because he's denied him. And the other nine, you know, when they arrested him in the garden, man, they were out of there. They took off running. So in their mind, and in the way that they respond, they literally thought that the kingdom of Jesus ended when the Romans arrested him. As far as they were concerned, it's over, done deal. The thief hanging on the cross realized before the disciples, these men had been walking with him for about two and a half, three years. They've seen the miracles, they've seen the healings, they've seen the feeding of the five thousand, the feeding of the four thousand, they've seen all of this, and they still don't get that it's not a physical kingdom. This thief realizes something that even the disciples hadn't figured out yet. Matthew 8:29, demons called the name of Jesus. Matthew 8:29. Let me look that one up. I don't deny you, I don't doubt that you're right, Tony, I'm just trying to... Suddenly, they shouted, "What have you to do with the Son of God?" The words they use, the Greek word there is not, let me pull up the Greek. Let me pull up the Greek on that.
It's, they named the name Jesus in the King James and New King James, but not in the NIV.
Yeah, what verse is that again? I'm looking for the Greek here.
8:29, Matthew 8:29.
No, in the Greek, it's "Son of God." It's not, it's neither "Yeshua," nor is it "Easos." It is, in the Greek, it is "Son of God." I appreciate you bringing that up, Tony, because that's the thing about translations, folks, is that when you're dealing with translations, there are times when, instead of giving you the word that you're looking for, or the word that you're expecting, they give you the one that they think is closest to what the author meant. And that's why, quite often, I know with Dale, Dale's the reason that I used the one that you just saw me pull up, the Esau Bible. Dale showed me that one, using it for things like this, so I appreciate it. Dale showing me that, because it allows you to pull it up, and it allows you to look at the Greek. Because although in some Scriptures, it says Jesus, though, when you go back to the Greek, you realize that the word "Easos," nor the word "Yeshua" is there, that the author's realizing, "Oh, Son of God." Well, what I was saying was that when you look at it today, how many kids today are named Hazards? And that's Jesus, Jesus is Jesus, J-E-S-U-S. And as Dale said, there was a huge Messianic expectation. There was a lot of people wishing, hoping for him, their child was going to be the Son of God, was going to be the Great Deliverer, the Great Messiah, and it just, it did. The difference with Jesus is when the angels told Joseph, and Mary as well, "And they shall call him Emmanuel." There's the key word with Jesus. Yeah, when the angels are talking to Mary, you know, they make that proclamation of, "You shall, you know, that you have found favor among God, you are highly blessed, and the child that you're going to have is of God." You know, I don't know if it's code as much as they simply told Jesus, told Mary that she was going to have the Son of God, that He would be of the Holy Spirit. Yes, Pastor? Well, and, you know, the whole thing here is, is that this name, you know, with this name of Jesus, this simple fact of that the name means the Deliverer, and that everyone's hope was that their child would be the Deliverer. And as we, I want to go down to what Jesus actually said for a moment, when He turns and He looks at the thief, and He says, "Today you shall be with Me in paradise." Does that mean, what does that mean, heaven, what does paradise mean? When you hear Jesus say, "Today you'll be with Me in paradise," what is, in your thoughts, what does Jesus say? Means heaven, okay?
She talks about the Garden of Eden, but I've never looked at it that way. I'm thinking, "We're going to heaven right now."
I see, there's the thing. Exactly, and here, and once again, folks, this goes back to words, because when you begin to look at the word paradise, which is "Paradiosos," "Paradiosos" is the same word that, Luke 23:43. "And Jesus said unto them, Verily, I say to thee, Today thou shalt be with Me in paradise." 2 Corinthians 12:4. "How that He was caught up into paradise and heard unspeakable words, which is not lawful for a man to utter, Revelations 2:7. He that hath an ear, let him hear what the Spirit saith unto the churches; to him that overcome it, will I give to eat of the tree of life, which is in the midst of paradise of God." Literally, when you look at the word paradise, it is an ever-encompassing word of the perfection of being in the presence of God. This morning in the Sunday, what did I tell you that the Scripture said? "God was walking among the trees in the cool of the day in the garden of Eden." In paradise. Whether paradise is heaven in and of itself full, I don't know. If one of you get to heaven before me, send me an email and let me know what it means, okay? I'd appreciate it. I'm like, I just want to get there, I'm not so sure, I just want to get there. Just let me be there with them, and I'll be a happy camper. But this notion, and this goes back to, folks, of knowing the word of God, because if I'm listening to this thief, if I'm listening to this letter as it's being read to the Gospels, and Jesus looks at this thief and says, "Today you'll be with Me in paradise," if I'm a first-century Christian, my mind goes to the Garden of Eden. Because I already know that the word paradise is consistently and always a reference to the Garden of Eden. That, so the moment Jesus says, "You'll be with Me in paradise," my mind goes to Eden. Now, who was Adam and Eve with in the Garden of Eden? God. So when I hear this word paradise, when I read that Jesus says, "Today you will be with Me in paradise," what I'm hearing, especially as a first-century Christian, what I'm hearing Jesus say is, "Today you'll be with God." "Today you'll walk with God." Your pain, your suffering, all of that that's going on, folks, it ends today. And for that thief, that's all that thief was asking for. The thief didn't ask to sit on the right or the left. He's not like the disciples who want to sit on the right or the left of God. He's not like other people who want to try and take advantage of Jesus, and, you know, they tried to make him a king one time, and he had to leave him. Another time, they tried to get him to stay longer, then he wanted to stay, no. This thief is simply saying, "When you get to God, would you please remember me?" And Jesus looks at him and says, "You'll be in paradise with Me." And that goes, you know, that goes back to what I said earlier about this notion of us, when we know the Bible, when we understand, and when we read, and when we study, then when we hear things like this, we understand that connection. Because whilst we hear the word paradise, and I suspect the majority of people when they hear the word paradise, don't even think about the Garden of Eden. They don't even reference the Garden of Eden, because that's Old Testament. And that's why, Eden, well, Eden is, let me go there for a moment. The word for Eden is actually the word "Aiden." Genesis 2:8, "The Lord God planted a garden eastward in Eden. And verily put the man whom He had formed, and out of the ground made the Lord God, to grow every tree that is pleasant to the sight, and good for food. The tree of life also was in the midst of the garden, and the tree of knowledge, of good and evil." The word Eden occurs seventeen times in sixteen verses in the Old Testament. Seventeen times Eden is referenced. It is also found in Revelation 2:7, which I read to you a moment ago, that "I will give you the eat of the tree of life, which is in the midst of the paradise of God." That same word is what's used in 23:43 that we read today, and that Revelation even notes that the tree of life is in paradise. Genesis 2:8 also tells us that it's in Eden. But when Adam and Eve messed up, what did God do? He did something else. What did He do?
Banished them, sent them out.
He sent them out, but He, but Go a little further, Billy, He did something. He not only sent them out, He... He put a guard at the Garden of Eden, no one else could go in. He removed it, it was gone. The earth was no longer perfect. Nor is there any place on the earth that we know of that is absolutely perfect, and the moment a human being enters it, it's no longer perfect. So it was gone. It was blocked off. You know, Genesis tells us that the Garden of Eden is where the three rivers meet. The problem with that is, there's nowhere open Mesopotamia where three rivers meet. There's a place where the two rivers meet, the Tigris and the Euphrates meets, but there's not a third river there. We have no clue where it was at. Not even going to ask about Pittsburgh, not even going to go there.
Can I share a couple of things with that?
Please, go ahead, please, Dale.
Yeah, well, the whole thing with the river is, that would have got messed up with a flood, you know, so the topography and everything would have changed. But also, in Isaiah 14 and Ezekiel 28, and several other places in Ezekiel, talks about paradise and gives insight into it, about it being the mountain of God. And what you see in the Garden of Eden, you see the garden, you see the mountain of God, and it's the place where human beings were, but also God's divine beings that He created. And it's where God tabernacled, it's where God was. And so when man sinned, and God cast him out of there, it destroyed that whole thing that God had created. And so what we see is that God has taken us back to the original creation, all the way through Scripture, and in Revel- way through Scripture and in Revelation. And so when we see the new heaven and new earth and all this kind of stuff, he's really taken us back to the beginning where the human being, the divine being, all the creation of God would be together as one.
He takes us back to that perfection.
The new heaven and new earth.
Oh, that's all, new heaven and a new earth.
What was that scripture in Isaiah?
Which one? Dale, what was, Isaiah what, Dale?
Oh, wait, he started off, Isaiah 14, Ezekiel 28. That's talking about Lucifer when he rebelled against God and it starts giving insight into what it was like. And then just a lot of passages in Ezekiel give some insight into that.
And I'm sorry, I don't have page numbers here. And she's talking about that Revelation uses paradise imagery to represent the state of perfect and lasting life with God, Revelation 21:1, 22:1. It's a place where God's home will be with human beings and death will be no more.
Page 29.
Page 29, thank you. Now, if you go to Paradise now, because I love this, the Paradise starting with the kingdom, this rescue, this paradise, this experience of life lived in God's presence begins today for those who place their trust in Jesus. Over and over, Jesus makes clear that the goodness of salvation is not just for the sweet by and by. Salvation is not just what some would call fire insurance for life after death. It is here and it is now. Now, and since Ash Wednesday, the one thing that I've consistently gone back to is before he died on the cross, he lived. And that's, you know, that's the message that we need to have onto is that, you know, before we get to Good Friday, when, you know, when we remember the death on the cross and before we get to sunrise, so is in Easter Sunday and all that, we need to remember that he lived. The moment we give our life to Christ, the kingdom of God draws near to us. This is not something we're waiting to go to, folks. The moment we accept Jesus as our Savior, he draws near to us.
Eternal life, we get it right there.
Exactly. The scripture says that when we give our life to Christ, what does he do? He walks with us. And he walks with me and he talks with me and he tells me I am his own. That's what Jesus is trying to get his disciples to understand and they don't get it until the upper room. That's what he's trying to get other people to understand is that, you know, when he's coming out of the temple and he says, "Tell down the stone and in three days I'll build it back up." And then he's talking to the disciples and he says, you know, that the kingdom of God will come before some of you die. The kingdom of God, when he ascended into heaven, folks, the kingdom of God began here and now.
That's the last sense of that paragraph that you just read. That's what that says. Sometimes we can become so fixated about the promise of life and death that we miss the eternal life and kingdom living, which Jesus invites the world here and now today.
Exactly. We get so fixated on what over the time it's gonna be that we don't enjoy life before we get there. And we don't share life before we get there. Folks, we live in a dying and hurting world. And the only cure for the pain and the only cure, folks, the only cure for death is Jesus Christ. That's it. That's the only cure for death. And if we don't share that message, if we're spending so much time looking forward to the kingdom of God, that we don't live the here and now, that we don't make a difference in the here and now, there's gonna be a lot of people who won't ever know the kingdom of God. So, you know, as we continue in this season of Lent, I cannot stress enough, place, 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 that before he ever died, he lived. And he calls us to do the same thing, to live for him, that others might be changed. Questions, comments, or thoughts before we wrap up? Uh, something, hang on, I've gotta pull up the chat. Chat closed out on me. I hope the snake... Good point, David. I hope the snake is not there. Well, hopefully the snake doesn't make it. Actually, when you read the book of Revelation, boy, I'm gonna regret this. I'm gonna say this and probably then end it before I get in trouble. If you notice, according to Revelation, Satan isn't thrown out of the kingdom until the very end of time. And then he's thrown into the lake. But prior to that, which if, remember what Jesus said, the kingdom has, the kingdom begins, right? So of course Satan is in, if this and now, all life is part of the kingdom, then, yeah, I don't know about you, but Satan still has a lot of fun with me. Satan still tries to make me miserable. He's still roaming the earth and seeing how much trouble he can cause, going back to the image of Joe. He's still roaming the earth seeing how much trouble he causes. Anything else before we dismiss?
We're discussing technology, probably, of the devil.
There are times when I think technology may very well be of the devil. Or at least he infects it. Maybe he just infects it is what... Go back to the movie The Gremlins. That's what it is. We have gremlins. Somebody fed the gremlin after midnight. That's what happened. Somebody fed the gremlin after midnight. Let's bow our heads together for a prayer. Father God, thank you so much for this chance to come together tonight. Lord God, thank you for your son, Jesus, who gave his life that we can learn and grow in, and grow in our knowledge, Lord God. Let us hear those words that Jesus said to the thief. "Today you shall dwell with God. Today you shall walk in the cool of the evening among the trees with God." When we give our life to God, the kingdom of God draws near. And we begin to realize that there's so much more to this kingdom, Lord. It's not just about after we die, but that living for the kingdom is so important as well. As we go forward this week, Lord God, give us the strength, the wisdom, the willingness to speak of that kingdom and share it with other people. For it's in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that we pray. Amen.